Welcome to the regular meeting of the Blacksburg Planning Commission. Regular meetings of the Blacksburg Planning Commission are held here in the Roger E. Hads Path Chambers on the first Tuesday of each month at 6:30 PM. Citizens may address the Planning Commission during specified times on the agenda and are requested to adhere to the following. Please speak at the podium. Please state your name and address. Direct comments only to the commission. Please limit your speaking time to a maximum of three minutes. And speak only once during a specific hearing or comment period. A wireless microphone is available to anyone requiring the assistance. Please silence cell phones, show respect for all speakers, and allow all opinions to be expressed in a tolerant atmosphere. With that, we'll call the meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Britt.
Here.
Mr. Irman.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
President.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Cassoff.
President.
Mr. Cassie.
Here.
Ms. Reinhardt.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Here.
I'm here. We have a call.
Wonderful. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda is our consent agenda, and we have a single item, which is the approval of the Planning Commission minutes from October 7th. And the proposed action is to approve those minutes. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. We'll move on to our public hearings for tonight. Our first public hearing is CUP 25-4, which is a conditional use permit request for multifamily duplex in Old Town Residential at 205 Washington Street. And we have a staff presentation by Kenzie O'Shea.
Thank you. The following is a request for duplex use in the OTR Old Town Residential zoning district. This request follows a previously approved request for a duplex which has since expired. The blue area indicates the parcel on Washington Street. It is adjacent to the town hall annex and the town's five chimneys building. The previous conditional use permit expired in 2020, or was approved in 2022. The existing structure is two stories with a basement and was designed and built as a three-story dwelling unit, including the basement as a unit. Most recently, the building housed office uses. The proposal is to remodel the structure back into a two stacked, two-unit stacked duplex. The basement would be used for mechanical and storage. Each of the units is proposed to be two bedrooms with one bathroom. There are no significant site changes proposed. Conditional use permits are evaluated per their zoning ordinance, Section 1181, which calls for the consideration of the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and the mitigation of potential adverse impacts. The comprehensive plan is supportive of varied housing opportunities throughout town, especially for non-student rentals. The site is within the medium-density residential future land use, which allows up to 20 bedrooms per acre. The proposed development is required to adhere to district standards, which are seen on the screen, and the existing or proposed standards are seen on the right-hand column. The parcel is within the Old Town Residential zoning district seen in teal on the screen. On the left is an existing condition survey of the property showing the building and the pavement areas, and on the right is the street view of the existing building in the center of the, in the center of the image. The image on the left is the proposed condition, showing the installation of a modified type A buffer yard between the existing parking and the property line, consisting of vegetation and a four-foot architectural screen. The existing gravel area to the side of the house will be removed and replaced with grass. The elevations on the right show the front and the sides of the building. The plan shows proposed landscaping to the rear of the property along with a four-foot architectural screen. Street trees will also be provided along Washington Street. Water and sanitary sewers serve the site and are adequate for the proposed development. There are no proposed improvements that trigger stormwater management requirements. There's transit service available nearby on Washington Street and Kent Street, as well on South, as well as on South Main Street. The existing sidewalk on Washington Street is not proposed to change. There are two staff recommended conditions for substantial conformance and unit occupancy. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on Thursday, October the 9th, and the summary notes were included in your packet. In conclusion, the town, the Planning Commission and town council are asked to evaluate conditional use permits per Section 1181 of the zoning ordinance with any conditions imposed by staff and recommended by town council. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Kenzie?
I have one. The occupancy standard?
Yes.
I feel like it mentioned for the entire property, but it seemed like it should have been more for the individual.
It should be per unit, yes.
Okay, so...
As written, it would, we would, we would enforce that per unit.
Okay. Yeah, that says unit, in the staff report or on the application, it had said for the property.
Okay.
And that just tripped me up. We're good.
Yes, Ken.
Anything further for Kenzie? Great. Well, we'll move on to the applicant presentation.
Appreciate you looking at this for us. Thank you very much. My name is Tom Koontz with TKA Architects, and I am representing the prospective owner. The gentleman who's applying for this is attempting to purchase the property from the Virginia Tech Foundation, who now owns it.
Same work. Yep.
So, the house is a wood-framed structure with a hip roof on it. It has an eyebrow dormer for ventilation on the front there. You can see this is the Washington Street elevation. It has aluminum siding on three elevations. It has aluminum, relatively new aluminum windows, which we will keep. The aluminum siding we will clean up. This is, again, the entry off of, off of Washington Street. The existing, or former use of the house, as Kenzie just mentioned, was three apartments, one in the basement, one on the first floor, and one on the third floor, or the second floor, the third apartment. And it converted to a business use under a special use permit. The rear of the building, which you see on the right-hand side slide, has a second-story porch on it, an enclosed porch, and a kind of a natural unfinished wood. The intention is when we clean the aluminum siding on the three elevations, the wood siding on that rear elevation would be replaced with the aluminum siding to match the wood, and we would paint the natural wood porch on the second floor there. The proposal here is to take it back to residential, which is, which is what it was before, several years ago. It is Old Town, Old Town Residential, but it needs a conditional use permit because it's duplex, it's not a single-family dwelling. It always was a multifamily dwelling, but we're just going to take it back instead of three to a duplex. The intention is to provide housing for non-students, professionals, young professionals, but obviously if students, he might rent to students, but that's not his intention. If he did, he would rent to graduate students, that sort of, of graduate. So, that's the intention of the house, what we're trying to do here. We'd like to, again, propose to restore it back to the residential character. The renovation, as Kenzie mentioned, we cleaned the aluminum siding. We're going to add, we propose to add cement board headers over the windows, sills under the windows, and a freeze board around the perimeter of the house under the roof. That would dress up the architectural character of the house quite a bit. Right now, the windows are very plain and stark, and this would give it a lot more architectural character. We paint that new trim, the corner boards and freeze boards, in a warm gray. We would then, the future owner is a hokey, and he wants to paint the front doors a maroon color. And the brick chimneys would stay the way they are, the roof would stay the way it is. The paint, again, I mentioned that we would be painting the second floor porch on the back. We would be replacing that with siding. We would also be updating the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems throughout inside the building, inside the duplex. We would also update the interiors by opening up the floor plan. This is the existing first floor plan on the left of the image, and as you can tell, it's very chopped up, as it would have been from the 1920s, small boxy rooms. And we intend to open it up quite a bit on the right-hand side, to, it ends up being pink on this slide. So, where we take down the walls, we open up a new L-shaped kitchen, and you can see the old kitchen, the existing kitchen in the photograph on the left, but open up an L-shaped kitchen and into a much more of a great room, from the rear to the front of the house. We would keep the French doors opening into the living room to the front, and the bedrooms and the bathrooms will all be, of course, painted, cleaned up, new finishes and new fixtures in the bathrooms. So, the intention here is to, is to obviously upgrade it, bring it up to where it could be rented to young professionals. Second floor is essentially the same, is the same floor plan. It has an office in the upper right-hand corner where the porch, the first-floor porch is, on the first floor, or the porch is, the entry porch is on the first floor. The photograph shows the French doors in both floors, or this is on the second floor, but they're very nice, they're open, they're glass, and we'd like to keep that architectural On the site, we will restripe the parking. We would, there's a gravel area kind of in the middle of that site plan on the right-hand side. Yes, thank you. And we would be taking that out and reseating that area, so it's a much softer landscape. We would replace that gravel, we'd add vegetative screening in the back, Kenzie already mentioned that, a buffer yard in the rear, and then streetscapes trees along Washington. The timeline, of course, is we're here November 4th at the Planning Commission. If this is approved, ultimately, we would begin almost within a few weeks of it being approved by town council. He will be closing on the property in early December, so his intention is to move on it very quickly. And he wants this to be a beautiful project, and he wants to be able to, obviously he needs to keep it nice to be able to rent it, so that's his intention. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for the applicant? No, thank you. Appreciate that. Move on to public comment. If anyone would like to address the commission on this particular public hearing, you may do so at this time. Going once, all right? Hearing done, we'll move on to motion and discussion. Do we have a motion regarding CUP 25-4?
Would we recommend adoption of CUP 25-4 with the two conditions recommended by staff, one of which is a little bit modified based on...
Oh, I think that it appeared correctly on the screen. It was just in the reading somewhere. Second.
Great. Any discussion? All right. Hearing done, we have a motion on the, on the dais. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
As opposed? Great, thank you. Move on now to our second public hearing, which is rezoning 25-7. Overtakes 2094, rezoning requests from General Commercial to PR Planned Residential for mixed-use multifamily and commercial development at 702 University City Boulevard. And we have a staff presentation by Kenzie O'Shea.
Thank you. There are several addressed buildings on the parcels to be rezoned. There is a mix of commercial and residential uses today. The contract purchaser is a scent property company, and the parcels comprised are a little over four and a half acres. Rezoning area is shown in blue. You can see it does have frontage along UCB, University City Boulevard. The proposal includes a single six-story building with four floors of residential above two floors of parking. There are 836 bedrooms proposed at a density of 180 bedrooms per acre. The proposed parking ratio is .56 spaces per bedroom. The development will have 5% tree canopy and 30% open space comprised of open-air terraces and indoor recreation amenities. This is the most recent site plan that was submitted by the applicant, showing University City Boulevard along the bottom of the screen and the building footprint shown in blue. Section 1151 of the zoning ordinance outlines the Planning Commission's response or responsibility for considering rezoning requests. And that pertains to the comprehensive plan, the relationship of the proposal to the zoning ordinance, the need and the justification for the change, which is the applicant's burden to prove, and the effect of the change on neighboring surrounding, on the neighboring surrounding area and public facilities. The comprehensive plan, commercial designation, does not contemplate residential density. However, residential uses are allowed in the implementing zoning districts. The comprehensive plan, future land use designation, is commercial. It is also in a mixed-use area indicated by the red bubble. Comprehensive plan, MAP-E, shows preferred locations for high-density student housing in orange and preferred locations for mixed-use with student housing in maroon. The subject area lies outside these designated areas, as indicated by the red circle and the zoomed-in image on the right. As a reminder, there are a number of goals and policies within the comprehensive plan as it relates to the proposed request. The proposal does include a minimum of 12 and a half percent of the total number of units as affordable. However, Council Student, the Council Policy on Student Housing, Resolution 8F25, states that there are increasingly few locations in town that are appropriate for high-density student housing, and that despite changing commercial and office markets, the town prefers mixed-use in commercial areas. The planned residential district allows up to 10% of the gross land area to be developed with commercial uses. The applicant is proposing approximately 5,000 to 7,500 square feet of commercial space, which equates to approximately 2% of the total PR land area. The commercial component of the development is along the property's frontage on UCB, as indicated in the red circle. In the zoning ordinance, there's a statement of purpose for each district. The PR district allows flexibility for applicants to determine the best standards that meet the intent of the proposed development and the district purpose. The intent of the district can be met in a number of ways. In exchange for flexibility, the application of plan and proffers are binding. Any substantive changes would require the applicant to amend the PRD through the public hearing process. The current zoning is GC, general commercial, as seen in the red. In the zoning ordinance, there are three types of regulations that govern new development. The PR district allows applicants to propose most of the district standards, but use and design standards and development standards still apply unless modifications are specifically requested. The district standards apply to all development within a particular zoning district. The existing and proposed standards are found on the table and in the staff report. The proposal includes a mix of unit types from one-bedroom units to five-bedroom units. Occupancy will be restricted, as per the application, to a family plus two or no more than one person per bedroom when all residents are unrelated. The proposed density is significantly higher than the surrounding developed area and what the current zoning would allow at 180 bedrooms per acre. The applicant is including a minimum of 32 units to be made affordable to households earning between 50%, 50 to 80% AMI for a minimum of 50 years. Open space is required as both a district standard in the PR district and as a use and design standard for multifamily uses. A minimum of 20% is required. The applicant is proposing several outdoor terrace spaces for residents, as well as indoor spaces such as lounge and fitness areas that exceed the maximum standard totaling at least 30%. These areas are located on top of the parking podium but are open to the sky and provide recreation and seating areas. The medium-green areas in this image indicate recreational open spaces and include several terraces, a rooftop pool, and the grass-paved fire lane area that's outside, surrounding area of building, of the building. Use and design standards govern the development of a particular use in any zoning district. The use and design standards for multifamily uses are intended to provide an attractive, street-oriented development with appropriate connections and open space. The red circle indicates the main entrance of the building, and the yellow, yellow areas indicate sidewalks areas, sidewalk areas that are on-site. The bottom image is the eastern elevation, which is visible from the rear of the homes along Hutcheson Drive. The top image is the western elevation or the front along University City Boulevard, showing the main entrance and the commercial space. This slide shows zoomed-in views of the plaza area by the main entrance and the commercial area along University City Boulevard. Renderings show the front of the building along University City Boulevard and from the south, near Prices Fork Road. The standard of 1.1 parking spaces per bedroom accommodates resident-plus-guest parking and is typical of student apartment living where unrelated individuals occupy bedrooms. The planned residential district allows an applicant to propose an alternate standard. The applicant's justification includes proximity to campus and downtown and adjacent bus, and adjacent bus stops. Landscaping is required to be provided per the zoning ordinance. The minimum tree canopy should be as per similar uses, which in this case would be multifamily and would require a 10% canopy coverage. Street trees are required to be provided along all street, all public street frontages. The applicant is proposing a 5% canopy coverage and street trees along UCB. Signage should be evaluated for its appropriateness to the development in the surrounding area. The application has included new signage plans that show proposed signage raising, ranging in size from 17 and a half square feet to 96 square feet. The stormwater concept plan is approved. Town public water serves the site and is adequate to support the development. Improvements are needed to the sanitary sewer line in UCB in order to accommodate the development. The applicant will have to bear the cost of the improvements, as there is no currently funded CIP for these improvements. Blacksburg Transit serves the site with northbound and southbound stops nearby on UCB. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on September 3rd. There were a number of concerns regarding density, traffic, pedestrian activity, and loss of commercial. The most recent proffer statement is dated October 28 and includes substantial conformance, proffers for affordable units, green building standards, a parking policy, and maximum occupancy regulations. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Questions for Kenzie? I have a, maybe not a question, but I'd like some clarification, and maybe Matt would be best to address it, I don't know. It's regarding the affordable housing component and how that would be managed, what the town's involvement would be, and the enforceability of that. Are you prepared to speak to that, Matt?
Yeah, I can address that. Our housing manager, Kim Thurlow, has been working with the scent. To summarize it, it's basically similar guidelines to the home program that HUD administers. That's what they've been working on. So, that would be how it would be administered. There may be a proffer statement they're working on. I'm not entirely sure. I'll leave it to the applicant to touch on that, but they've been corresponding back and forth, kind of fine-tuning what it looks like on the administrative side, but that's the, the basic umbrella that they're operating under. Does that answer your question?
It does. With respect to enforceability, that's all addressed in that, in the...
Yeah, so those guidelines address that. So, there's provisions where they provide income verification and things of that nature on an ongoing basis for the compliance period. So, so those are all addressed in there.
And would the town be involved in the administration or operation of the units?
We wouldn't be involved in the operation of the unit. We'd be involved in just, you know, the compliance piece to making, to make sure that the, the units are adhered to in terms of the terms of the proffer statement for affordability.
Vetting of applicants?
So, we would income verify the applicants. We wouldn't get the applicants, but we would make sure that the applicants that are provided are verified correctly and meet the standard for 60% of area median income, 80%, whatever the unit is. Our staff would verify that, like we do with other developments in town and in the, in the newer valley for the home construction.
And would there be a relationship to the trust with these?
No, these are rental. So, right now, the trust is owner-occupied, so there's no rental units in the trust. It's something we're looking at in the future, but no, these would not be part of that. They would just have an affordability period, and then when that expires, they go to market rate. The developer could choose to renew it if there's other, you know, parts of redevelopment of the site, so on and so forth.
Okay, that's great. Any questions for Matt? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions for Kenzie?
Any further, you have a question for Kenzie?
Yeah.
Yeah, please do.
Kenzie, there have been some circumstances in the past where we have thought about allowing residential on the ground floor in a commercial area when the residential is kind of behind other commercial strips, you know, not readily accessible. And, and I feel like, I won't say it goes far as we could have a policy around that, but isn't there something a little bit formalized?
There is. So, in the general commercials zoning district, there, there are stipulations about allowing ground floor residential uses in mixed-use developments. So, when you have developments that share things like stormwater and parking, whether they are integrated within buildings or individual buildings on a lot, as, as we saw up at, up near Giles and North Main Street.
Yeah, okay.
It's when, it's when it's a part of a mixed-use development and, and not just separate developments.
Okay, and, and we sort of contemplate that behind Kroger, too, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, yep, you're right. Okay, thank you.
And I think the, the residential hiding behind commercial wasn't, isn't that at Midtown, number five, building five?
Yes, there is, there is commercial on the ground floor and residential above and behind.
And behind.
Thank you.
That was that first one.
Any additional questions for staff? All right, hearing done, we'll move on to the applicant presentation. You'll see a timer on the dais there. If you could keep your comments, 10 minutes, I'd be great.
This moves us back and forth?
I think so.
That's perfect. Okay. Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, Councilmen Ford, for your time this evening. Appreciate it. My name's Josh Fassbinder with the Scent Property Company, here to talk about 702 UCB. Want to start with this idea of the comprehensive plan in MAP-E and how this project, we think, still meets or knows it meets the goals and objectives here that the town set out as part of this comprehensive plan. Our understanding and reading the comp plan is that it's a guide. It's not meant to be exclusive, right? It was done in '22. The map was identifying these sites. I'm not sure exactly why this commercial corridor wasn't identified as close proximity to Virginia Tech to have higher-density housing, but it does show, under your comprehensive plan, both MAP-B and C, which I'm sure you all are aware of, but those do allow and want to see redevelopment and density in transit commercial corridors that already incorporate utilities and infrastructure. Again, MAP-C, we think that this is, again, a location that fits and meets the definition of MAP-C under the comprehensive plan. And really, more importantly, we think that this project adheres and meets a lot of the town's objectives and goals for housing. First and foremost is expanding the overall housing supply, right? We understand the focus is student housing, but as you'll see in a minute, this project is providing a smaller percent of four and five bedrooms than other projects recently in front of you, again, focusing on studios and two bedrooms. And in addition to that, the affordable units that we're building on-site, again, hoping that that's a bigger, more extensive expansion of the overall supply. Promotes walkability, which we think is really, really important with this location. Promotes housing diversity, and then neighborhood preservation as well. We think this project does do that by, again, directing students into a location that's specifically built for them and not in these single-family kind of dorm, mini-dorm-type units that are currently in the neighborhoods. We've talked a lot about, again, MAP-E, but we do think, again, that although MAP-E was included in the '22 comprehensive plan to identify high-density projects, it was not, again, exclusive to those locations. It was used as a guide, as part of the overall comprehensive plan, and feel like this project, again, including this Resolution 8F25, again, allows for the town to consider sites outside of MAP-E for this kind of development. And again, just being in town today, looking at the comps, going to the comps, everybody is, you know, higher pre-leased this year than they were last year. Rates are up, you know, that's supply-demand, the town does need to create, again, more housing opportunities for people here. Specific to the loss of commercial space, again, this is a very unique site that prohibits, and really, again, is on the backside of the property, limiting, again, the amount of commercial. 60% of this building is currently vacant, right? So, I don't think it's, it's, it's realistic to think that overnight, if, if this project's not approved or some facsimile of this project, that all of a sudden, this, this office is going to get re-leased and be full. They've been trying for years to lease this office and just not have had success, and again, over 60% of it is vacant today. So, with that, I'm going to call up my partner to talk a little bit more about some other things that we've, we've uncovered.
Thank you. Um, well, I just want to say that we appreciate the collaboration that we've experienced over the last two-plus months, working with the planning commission and the community, and we've received a lot of, uh, very thoughtful and actionable, actionable comments and suggestions on how to improve the project, and we've worked very hard to try to implement as many of those as possible while maintaining a, um, you know, a feasible project that addresses this housing need and student housing need in town. Um, I'll run through the changes, uh, real quick, and then, um, Jeff with Antunovic will hit on them in more detail, but I think one of the bigger ones is project scale and density. You know, what is the right density and scale for a project of, you know, in this location? And we, we've reduced density by seven and a half percent since, you know, our initial proposal. Um, we've also increased the parking ratio by about seven and a half percent, um, to point five six spaces per bedroom. We've also commissioned a third-party parking study that, uh, we're happy to talk about it and share. Affordable housing, um, you know, we, we've collaborated a lot with, with, uh, the town of Blacksburg, increased our commitment to twelve and a half percent, and we've also agreed on a, uh, a compliance and enforcement program, one that was recommended by the town. Um, proximity and impact to McBride Village, obviously this is a sensitive topic that, that we've been aware of, and, um, we've worked really hard to try to minimize those impacts, whether it's with setting the building back, um, you know, which, um, has a second, um, ulterior motive, which is preserving the tree cover that currently, uh, exists between the property and the neighborhood. Creating more usable and actually functional o- open space to enhance the pedestrian experience, we've, we've done that, focused on two areas, but we've pulled the building, um, back from the boundary to do so. Um, and then architectural differentiation, differentiation and, uh, adding additional commercial space, which Jeff will talk about. Um, I know this is hard to see, but, uh, you know, when it comes to density, I think, uh, I think it's important to, to look at this in the context of other student housing projects and more specifically other student housing projects in the town of Blacksburg. When compared to 801 North Main and Tech Terrace, two projects which I understand are controversial to some people in, in this room, but also are the most recent comps, um, you know, our project at a hundred and eighty beds per acre is fifty percent less than 801 Main and fifty-two percent less than Tech Terrace. So we are taking an effort to make, uh, you know, to consider what reasonable density is in this location, and we understand we're here asking for a discretionary approval, so one of the, uh, you know, that's one of the concessions that we're making. Um, in terms of height, we're six stories, those other projects are eight and seven stories. Six stories is also the same height as the two hotel projects that are directly adjacent to this, also bordering on, uh, on McBride Village neighborhood. Um, we're lower from a lot coverage, uh, perspective and higher from an open space perspective, uh, both from zoning and from both of those projects. And again, the rear, rear setback, um, of thirty-five feet to the podium parking structure, and then another seventeen feet to the third to sixth level, uh, serves to, you know, mitigate some of those concerns while also preserving trees, which are the main source of cover between the neighborhood and the project. Then real quick on affordable housing, you know, this is, this is something that's very important to us. We've, we've incorporated affordable housing within projects in other municipalities, and we really see this as a, uh, a precedent that we hope the town uses going forward for these projects where, including the affordable onsite, um, you know, becomes kind of more the norm to produce actual, um, usable, affordable space in town. Just as a comparison, using the Charlottesville calculation that was used on 801 Main and Tech Terrace, if, if we were to pay a fee in lieu, which would be more economically feasible for us, and from what we've heard, uh, the town would prefer the units onsite, but if we were to pay a fee in lieu, we wouldn't be deducting, you know, three million dollars of infrastructure costs. We, we also have infrastructure costs with our project, but we're choosing not to, uh, deduct those from our contribution to the town, and, you know, ultimately it's a four and a half times, uh, you know, greater value to, uh, the town than, than to these other comparable projects. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Good evening, Plan Commission. My name's Jeff Salesco. I'm a senior principal with Antunovic Associates. We're collaborating with Ascent Property Company on this project. I only have a minute fifteen left, so I want to go right to the design elements. Alec had talked about a lot of other elements that we've been dealing with and adjustments we've been making, um, but I wanted to point out, um, with feedback from Plan Commission, we created a lot more articulation into the building. On the south side, you see the vertical articulation elements that we kind of layered through this portion of the building. Then when we get to the north side, as you look from the street, you see the setback we've created, then this rhythm that we've created, um, in articulation by creating significant setbacks in the building. Here you see the shadow lines where we've actually lost beds, we lost twelve beds, creating these setbacks within the building was something that was a very important point to Plan Commission. Here's a close-up of it showing a little bit more. Again, that relief really, um, traded a framework and a rhythm within the building that we did not previously have. So sorry we didn't get to touch on some other things, but did want to hit on that. And then lastly, um, we did increase our retail space, um, by twenty-eight percent to sixty-three hundred square feet. At the same time, we also created the outdoor amenity space in the front of the space, right on the street, seating areas, landscaping really nicely done. Also wanted to point out, one last thing, we have over twenty-two thousand square feet of usable outdoor space in this project, over eight thousand of that is at grade, twenty-two hundred square feet here, oh, almost seven thousand square feet at the lobby, which is really the heart and entry of the building. So, uh, thank you for giving me a couple extra seconds there, and, uh, we'd be happy to take any questions now. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant?
Can somebody just discuss the green building standard?
Thank you, I was waiting for somebody to ask. So this is under the National Green Building Standard, so NGBS, and so there's six standards that we have to meet, uh, and so we would go through a certification process, but it's from building design, reuse of existing materials, you know, low voltage, uh, you know, low flow toilets, low, you know, energy-efficient appliances. So we're happy to kind of put together an extensive list, but we would go through that certification process and meet that requirement under NGBS.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have one question.
Sure.
Uh, when, when you put this, could you put the slide back up where you come, with the affordable housing, with the three projects and your project and the, the cost?
Oh, yeah. This one?
It was the next one. It was the one that was more showing the... Yeah, that one. It was the last dense one. So I, I missed this in the work session, so I apologize if it was said. Um, so 801's approved, and so I know that the three thousand dollar, or three million deduction was because of all the stormwater management issues that that particular site suffers from, and, um, the assertion of that applicant that they weren't just fixing a problem to build their site, but that they were doing something better for the public, or the public good, we'll say. Tech Terrace isn't approved yet, so, um, I know they have some stormwater issues, um, but, but in this, you show that you're not doing anything, but in your presentation, you made it a point to say that you weren't deducting your infrastructure deduction. Um, so I'm just curious, what, what is it? What, I mean, I understand there, there were things going on that affect the community at large, so this particular site, what things are you doing that you guys, um, are advertising that you're not counting for? Because I'm not familiar, it seems pretty...
Yeah, I mean, I'll let Steve answer in more detail, but every project, uh, involves infrastructure, stormwater, um, you know, sanitary sewer improvements, our project does as well. I think the point was even if, even if we are, um, we're not planning to deduct those costs, and Steve, maybe you can talk...
So, so one of the, one of the, the main ones, Mr. Ford, is, as we had original conversations, initial conversations with town staff, you all probably remember the Glade Springs project. As part of that project, there were some, there were some areas of sanitary sewer along University City Boulevard that are currently over capacity.
Mm-hmm.
So UC, or Glade Springs was going to have to reroute and had some agreements in place with the town to rerun a new sewer line. So as we came in and looked at this project, you know, we were told by, uh, by engineering staff, you know, there are sections of this line in UCB that are already over capacity, so it can't accommodate any additional flow, um, because of what's coming through into the old Sturbridge Pump Station and coming up. And we actually just had this conversation, um, yesterday, again, with, with staff. So there's a, there's a large section of sanitary sewer right now that what we're showing, proposing is, um, let me go back to, if we've got a full site plan on this one. Um, basically just south of our site, so we're, there's a, there's a line in there, I believe it's an eight or a twelve inch that we're having to upgrade. So that's going to help with some of the additional, you know, overcapacity issues in that line that exist today. So basically from our site down, it would cross over UCB and tie into a manhole that, that picks up a larger pipe right there in front of the foundations property. So there's some, some bigger infrastructure issues that'll take care of a bigger problem the town has right now, that we would have to do as far as putting any additional flow um, into, in, into that project. So it's not really a, it's not an issue that because we've got eight hundred and thirty beds, you know, we asked the question yesterday, real, realistically, if you add any density, if you add any new flow to that, it just exacerbates that problem that we've got in the UCB sewer line right now.
Dave, when was the, the property as it is now? When was it developed? Do you know?
When was it developed?
My name is Kent Roberts. I'm an agent for the owner, the current owner of the property. Project was developed in the nineties. First building, I think, went up in nineteen ninety. The last building was finished in two thousand and two. So they were built during a different era, certainly, and, and a, a, certainly a different demand for services back then.
What was the difference in stormwater requirements then versus now?
That's a question I can't answer.
Maybe one of my colleagues can.
Well, I, I could say that it's much more, but actually, I think, to go back to my original question, is, um, it is kind of apples and oranges, because, uh, the main thing with the approved Main Street was stormwater, was, you know, surface water, rain and stuff, and, uh, the proposed project to Tech Terrace is equally dealing with that. From what Steve presented to us, they're dealing more with wastewater sewer, um, so they are two different things, so...
I, I would still believe that it would improve the site's performance in terms of stormwater to be developed to today's regulations versus twenty years ago. Am I wrong?
Not at all.
Yes, there were, there wasn't a stormwater management on the site. One was really, originally developed in the nineties. There, there's no underground detention, there's no above-ground ponds, so basically we'd be taking this and upgrading it to the current standards.
Which means that all the stormwater is handled on the site?
Yes, ma'am.
And none of it goes anywhere else?
Correct, correct. Yeah, I mean, there might be some, a small portion of off-site runoff like you have on any project, but yeah, we're containing it all in an underground system that will sit underneath the roundabout.
If you had to guess, how much impervious area are you adding?
We're, we're... Yeah, we're decreasing it a little bit than what's out there right now.
Questions? Anything further for the applicant? Thank you for your presentation. We'll move on to pub, uh, public comment. If anyone would like to address the commission on this particular public hearing, you may do so at this time.
Good evening. My name is Kalen Carey, and I'm a mom, a homeowner, and a full-time resident of 836 Hutcheson Drive in McBride Village, which is a quiet, walkable, and family-friendly neighborhood directly adjacent to the proposed six-story development that will tower over our one-story houses. I'm here on behalf of my family and a hundred and sixty-eight of my neighbors who signed the petition, which I just gave to you, strongly opposing this rezoning request. I've spent my weekends and evenings during the past two months talking to my neighbors, and we, homeowners and renters alike, are unified in our opposition to this unprecedented level of density, which is deeply concerning for several reasons. First and foremost, the proposed development directly conflicts with the town's comprehensive plan. This site is zoned as commercial. The comprehensive plan is a thoughtfully crafted document developed by our community, which was reaffirmed just this year by town council resolution. This plan clearly defines areas for high-density student housing, and this site is not one of them. What is the point of having a strategic comprehensive plan if we're not going to follow it? Second, introducing an eight hundred and thirty-six-person, six-story, two-and-a-half-football-field-long complex with a rooftop pool and cabana, which represents some of the highest-density housing in Blacksburg, a mere thirty-five feet away from our single-story homes, will fundamentally alter the character of our neighborhood. The scale and intensity of this development is fundamentally incompatible with the surrounding community. No other approved high-density housing in Blacksburg is immediately adjacent to so many single-story family homes. This proposed development will significantly increase vehicular and pedestrian traffic on University City Boulevard and surrounding streets, which are already some of the most clogged and dangerous in Blacksburg. This UCB Prices Fork traffic area is ranked by VDOT as one of the nineteen most dangerous corridors in all of Virginia for pedestrian risk. To get into campus every morning and return every evening, this development is going to force eight hundred and thirty-six students to cross four lanes of UCB, which does not have adequate crosswalks and pedestrian infrastructure, to catch the bus because it's on the other side of the street to go to campus, or it's going to force them to have to cut through the dangerous CVS parking lot to cross Prices Fork on foot and bike. This proposal will further demolish beloved Blacksburg businesses. The town has invested substantial ARPA funds in supporting daycares in our community, which will be eviscerated by the demolishing of Kinder Care, the only daycare in town that accepts childcare subsidies for working families. Finally, while this proposal includes a minimum of twelve percent affordable units, I similarly question whether this is sufficient or enforceable over the proposed fifty-year period. I understand the need for growth in housing near Blacksburg, but it must be responsible, balanced, and community-centered, and I urge the commission to reject this plan and follow the town's long-existing plans and vision. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I have to ask you, please, let's not applause, no, no comment after public comment. Public comment, uh, is exactly that. It's, it's addressing the commission, um, so, please, no, no ancillary... You're excused.
First, first time I've ever been here, so I don't know.
No.
I won't do it again.
Thank you.
Hello, commission. It's nice to talk to you all this evening. Um, my name is Annika Schmier, and I live at 709 Hutcheson Drive, which is primally adjacent to this new proposed development. It will be thirty-four feet from my backyard and my eleven-year-old daughter's window, which is in the back of my house. I've lived in McBride Village since ninth, since, sorry, two thousand and eighteen. My family chose our home with intention, drawn by the proximity to campus, town, and school, but also by the peace and quiet of our street. We invested in our home, we put in a new kitchen, um, and renovated our living room, not just financially, but emotionally, believing that this would be our long-term community. I've moved nineteen times in my life, and I'm ready to be done. McBride Village is more than a collection of houses. It's a vibrant, intergenerational neighborhood. Within a block, we have eleven children who play together, swing from our front yard tree, and share Halloween traditions that bring the whole neighborhood out in joyful celebration. I think we had a pack of forty kids walking around last weekend. Our seniors, our retired teachers, engineers, and even a fighter pilot, they're all here this evening, act as mentors and honorary grandparents to our children. Professors, county supervisors, and Virginia Tech staff live side by side with renters and families. We are connected, and that connection is... We are connected, and that connection is the foundation of our quality of life. The proposed rezoning threatens to unravel this fabric. A six-story building housing 836 students will tower over our homes, casting literal and figurative shadows. It will bring traffic we're not equipped to handle, strain our local Kroger, and eliminate afternoon sunlight from our backyards and gardens, many of which have been cultivated with years of care and investment. We already coexist respectfully with student renters, but this scale and this density will overwhelm our ability to maintain the harmony we've built. It risks pushing out long-term residents, especially seniors on fixed income, who cannot afford to relocate in today's market. McBride Village, McBride Village represents the Blacksburg middle, and what I think is the best of Blacksburg, and one of the big reasons why we moved here. It's affordable, it's connected, and it's thriving. Why would we disrupt a model that works? Lastly, this rezoning project is not in the Blacksburg comprehensive plan, as has been discussed. Exact comments from a leader on Town Council yesterday indicate that the town of Blacksburg previously identified these areas. We added a map, and this year they passed the resolution to vote based on that map. I urge you to consider the long-term consequences of this rezoning. Our neighborhood is a success story. Please don't make it a cautionary tale. Thank you.
My name is Bob Pack. I live at 522 Prices Fork Road. I developed Point West Commons in the nineties, and the vacancy rate was around 5% until COVID. By 2023, the vacancy rate shot up to around 60%. I then brought in two local realtors in the, in the summer of 2023, and then in the fall of 2023, I brought in two brokers who specialize in leasing of properties. It has been very difficult to lease office space since COVID. I have not been able to sell the property with all the vacant space, so the idea was to bring somebody in new with a different idea. The location is best suited for student housing, so I approve this development, and it is not, and it, and if that's not approved, I do not, I'm not sure what I will do with the property or can do if it's not approved.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Mullins. I'm at Zeppelin Restaurant that's in 18 University City Boulevard. So basically, I'm here to support these guys because they've been working with me, and they're willing to let me come back into the commercial space after the project is over. I'm kind of at a crossroads at this point in my life, my business partner passing away last year, and my lease being up next year. So I think the deliberation with my family, we've just decided that this is the right move to support them, and we come back a couple of years from now because I just want to approach the next chapter of my life, basically. Don't really have much more to say than that, but I do support the project.
Hi, I'm Beth Kelsey. I live at 714 Behringer Drive. For context, the, I live at the top of the hill, the last house on Behringer where it turns into Hutcheson, and I'm directly across the street from 813 Hutcheson and 815 Hutcheson, so I will be looking right at this. But this is a short and impactful anecdote about traffic and parking. Last week, I went on errands. I was going to Kroger and to the ABC store. I got stuck in the Kroger parking lot trying to get out for 15 minutes. I watched the clock. I was trying to use the exit that was near the post office that looks towards the McAdoo's Building and Bros Drive, and it took me 15 minutes to get out of Kroger. I persevered, went to the ABC store, and I was attempting to exit at, in between Panera, at that intersection, and where the oncoming intersection is at Meza. There was a 10-minute gridlock of people trying to turn left out of the hotel and out at Meza, and so I was stuck in that parking lot for 10 minutes. So on one errand, I spent 25 minutes in the parking lots of UCB. That's bad. More density will be worse. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. My name is Megan Kazmarsky. I'm a financial advisor with Edward Jones at 810 University City Boulevard, Suite F. And I do live on Blacks, in Blacksburg on Glade Road, 3730, again, in Blacksburg. I am a mom of two girls, I'm a Virginia Tech graduate, and I've been with Edward Jones for eight years. Gladly relocated to University City Boulevard in May of 2023, after searching for an office since 2020. I was concerned when I saw the, the news of the development, and have had wonderful conversations with Kent and Price in regards to potentially moving to the new space. My concern is regarding Resolution 8F25, number 2, point B, as the proposal speaks to how it would affect the town's supply of commercial space. I understand a sense point on number seven, as they speak to the viability of the retail space, changes that they've made to the project since the last meeting, but my concern is specifically about retail versus office. So I understand that this is adding retail space to University City Boulevard, but what is needed in Blacksburg is office space, not retail space. I think as Blacksburg Partnership would consent to as well with their contract of retail strategies, there has been an effort to revitalize the retail space in downtown Blacksburg and across Blacksburg, and retail is struggling. So specifically, office space is what I believe is needed in Blacksburg, and I appreciate you all considering this, as you consider this new development, which, again, would take away valuable office space on University City Boulevard.
Good evening. My name is Dale Woods. I'm here representing myself and my wife. We live at 614 Woodland Drive. I'm not sure how familiar you are with McBride Village, but Woodland Drive is a little cul-de-sac, 10 houses. It's basically an extension of Hutcheson Drive. We sort of prefer Hutcheson Drive as an extension of Woodland Drive. Anyway, our house is about six houses away from what I would call a looming, uh, recommend, proposal here. Here, and technically, the picture, there was an illustration that they used showing the buildings in relation to the homes that are, that are on Hutcheson. I walk that street practically every morning. It's much higher. From the, when the people that live there, my friends and fam, and neighbors, that, that proposal is going to be much higher looking to them in their backyard. McBride Village is a wonderful place to live. It's made up of people who are young professionals, many of whom work during the tech, doctorates, studying, working on making life better for people, retirees like myself and my wife, some students who live in people's homes, one or two people apartments. The camaraderie there, the, it's a family neighborhood that I think the town of Blacksburg gives, let it be lip service at least, to wanting everyone to live in a place like that. It has affordable housing. We bought our house 14 years ago. We probably couldn't afford it now, but we're really glad we did when we, when we retired there. I just want to support what Kalen and Annika and others, 183 people who ever signed the petition, that this, this, this proposal is too big. It looms over that neighborhood. There's no rea, and it is not designed to be there where it is. That, that is not a residential space and should not be. If you decide to approve it, and if the town decides to approve it, I have another concern that I think you need to very strongly consider, and that is the safety factor. The traffic on Prices Fork, because I understand that Prices Fork is one of the 20 or so most dangerous streets in all of Virginia, and the traffic there is horrible at times. The additional foot traffic, as well as the vehicle traffic from this proposal, is just going to make it worse. I think there's approximately, if I read it correctly, 1,500 beds now in the two large developments, the farm and Union. This is adding another 30 to 35% population to that population. Today, today, at 3:24 PM, I was pulling out of Woodland Drive, there, there's a light there, I'm sorry, there's a traffic light there. There were cars coming out of, of the university, going west. All of them were turning, going toward University City Boulevard. I counted, there were 16 students who, there's a light there at Woodland Drive, and the light says, no, no walking. You can walk across Prices Fork. You're not supposed to walk across Woodland Drive because people get run over. 16, I counted, in a matter of 30 seconds, 16 students jaywalked across that light. Add another 8, 10 students doing it. This is a dangerous situation. If you approve this, the town, or you, or somebody, it would be incumbent on you to do something. These folks aren't going to do it, to provide a better and safer environment. I urge you not to approve it, but if you do, consider that. Thank you.
My name is Bruce Gladhorn. I live at 825 McBride Drive, Blacksburg. I want to apologize for my outrageous behavior this, this evening. I would also suggest that maybe you get a microphone up here for those of us who have a little bit of hearing problem to hear the people who are speaking towards you all instead of the people who are here representing us, okay? Now, I understand there's going to be 836 units here. Is that correct? Now, with those units, how many people are going to be able to live in those units? There are one, two, three, four, and five-bedroom apartments. Is that correct? Am I correct in that?
Eight rooms.
Eight rooms. So we're going to have over 1,000 people living in, in that unit?
Eight thirty-six, total.
Eight thirty-six is total. So that's, I was confused on the units or how many people are there. My question is, I live in that McBride Drive now. There are a number of houses that are rented to students, and there is restrictions on how many students can live there. I've been here for 10 years. I haven't seen anybody come up and challenge the people who are living in these units, because there are six, seven cars out there every night in, in front of some of these units, okay? So that, that is an issue. So how are you going to enforce 836 units? Supposedly, you're going to enforce the people living in these units. How are you going to enforce that if you can't enforce the houses in 825, in, in around 825 McBride Drive? All right? So my question is, we're going to have more of these people coming in. You're going to have the traffic as a problem. As people have mentioned, certain times of the day, you cannot get down from McBride Drive onto Prices Fork because people are coming out of the university. Same thing on Thomas Creek Road with the buses going back out towards Patrick Henry. You cannot move certain hours of the day. So the point is, you're going to have more of these people coming in. There are 836 more people coming into that congested area already, all right? You know, I, I don't understand all these housing projects going on. We have projects over at Church and Midtown, right there by the police station. You have a housing project at Jefferson and Washington, multi-unit, units, and you have the, the Country Club Drive, where it's right across from Lefty's, my favorite restaurant. Anybody here from Lefty's? Anyway, I guess I'm, I'm out of time here. The lights are going off here. I, I'm definitely opposed to having this unit, this project going forward. Again, I apologize for my unruly behavior earlier this evening, and I hope to be back again to get more involved in the Blacksburg community projects.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Mark Embry. I'm a faculty member in the math department. My family moved here in 2014 into McBride Village. We live at 852 Hutcheson, which is around the corner from, as you know, Hutcheson Curves, and so we're around the corner at the top of McBride Village from, from the homes that are most severely affected by this development, which I strongly oppose. University communities have always posed a challenge. Cambridge University was founded because of student refugees that were thrown out of Oxford due to town and gown problems, so I applaud you for the work that you do to try to make this balance in, in our community here. When we recruit faculty to Virginia Tech, we're competing against universities from around the world, really, but certainly from around the country, many from cities and towns that have appeals that Blacksburg lacks, being nestled here in the, in the New River Valley. One of the key selling points that we have is the livability of this town. When we recruit faculty, often junior faculty, who are looking to establish families, that move into communities like McBride Village. If we cannot point to something like the comprehensive plan as a kind of guideline to what the town hopes to do, to help faculty choose where they might like to live in this community, it's, it's rolling the dice. We've seen the quality of life of McBride Village change over the decade that we've lived there, with far more student traffic, and we have school buses picking little kids up, we have students flying through in cars. As you consider this development, try driving through a university crossroads at about 7:00 at night, Chipotle, Meza, that area around there, looking at the traffic that will be adjacent to this new complex. Try crossing Prices Fork Road, as I do every morning when I want to walk to the office, at Woodland Drive, and seeing what that's like. We've had one student fatality on Prices Fork Road within this past year due to traffic up by Gilbert Street. We see students now crossing, not at lights, just across the road, like it's a game of Frogger, if any of you are old enough like me to remember that video game, trying to get across the road. I just want to mention one more point. We're considering making some renovations to our home, and in the process of doing that, we're weighing, obviously, whether or not it's worth investing in McBride Village, or whether we should consider moving to Christiansburg or elsewhere. We learned that we have a 35-foot setback in our property line. So we're thinking of putting a front porch on the front of our house, and we learned this week that we actually can't do that because that would encroach on the 35-foot setback from the road on Hutcheson Drive. I think we heard from Annika that this development will be 34 feet from her property. Isn't that out of measure? Seems a little crazy to me. So I ask that you please consider balance within our community, the comprehensive plan, and continuing to make Blacksburg a livable place as we accommodate both students and the families and others that would like to have here in town. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bud Bennett. I live at 714 Behringer Drive, and we're directly across, there, there's houses and there's a space in between, so we're going to be looking at this thing. The picture on slide number four, where the building is over the tops of the houses, is very disturbing. One of the things that I most hate about living in our neighborhood now is the amount of noise. And so we're going to put 836 more people directly across the street from us. There's no control of the noise in our town. You call the police about the parties and the noise and the fraternity houses that are miles away, there's nothing that, that gets done about that. And now we're going to have 836 people living across the street from us. It's very disturbing, and the light is also going to be disturbing to me, but the noise, what, what are we going to do about this? I mean, there's no control right now, and we're going to add this? It's, it's very distressing to me, so.
Good evening. My name is Florian Zach. I live at 832 Hutcheson Drive, and I'm a faculty member at Tech in the College of Business. From an economics point of view, I understand what the developers are doing. They want to maximize their profits, so, yeah, I would suggest a six-story building as well. From a community point of view, this building just doesn't fit into the community. There is a comprehensive plan. Cleared this property falls outside of that plan, making a... the dire setup of the current buildings that are there. If they cannot be rented out, quite frankly, somebody invested into those buildings, that's an entrepreneurial risk that whoever the developer was took. And, again, I'm for balance and very much against this six-story development. Thank you.
Good evening. It feels weird to be in this position. I'm Mary Biggs, and I live at seven oh-one Hutchinson Drive. I've lived there with my husband for twenty-seven years, and I'm here to speak tonight to support the neighbors and everything they have been, have brought forward to you. It's the truth. And I, and I can't support this, and I do want to say to the developers, I've been going to the meetings since they started, and they have made some revisions, but my concerns still are the density, and traffic and safety is so critical. Everything that has been said about Price's Fork Road and how, how we get in and out of our development and about University Boulevard, if you are going to put that many more people with scooters and bikes and cars, I can't even imagine what's going to happen as far as safety on University Boulevard and Price's Fork. The other thing I'm concerned about is parking. There are not enough parking places for the proposed development, and we at McBride know what happens when students, when students park. They park in our neighborhood all the time and still park illegally. I am very concerned. I chair the New River Valley Community Services Board, and our building is there. And right now, during the daytime, that parking lot is full with clients, and our employees park across the street, actually. And there's an easement that has been worked out with the two hotels whereby they're not sending folks over there to park during the day. If this goes through, you and I know where those students are going to park that don't have enough parking in the proposed project. They're going to be right over there in that parking lot, and that is a big concern for New River Valley Community Services. The other thing, our neighborhood, the closeness to our neighborhood, it's just, it's not, it's just not the right project for this placement, and that goes back to the comprehensive plan. That's why you have one, that's why we have one in the county. It is a flexible document, but one that needs to be respected. And so that's why, even after attending the meetings and seeing the revisions, I cannot support this plan. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Pat Garst. I have lived at seven one seven Burris Drive since nineteen ninety-six. My concern is fire, police, and rescue. There are almost constant sirens that we hear in the neighborhood, and the horns honking from the fire engines because people aren't paying attention or are blocking the road. To add that many more cars, pedestrians, to that intersection, I think, is going to be doubly dangerous. My question to the commission is, how does this project benefit the citizens of Blacksburg? Please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Garst. I live at seven one seven Burris Drive. I didn't have any prepared remarks. I just came to listen and observe, but what I've noticed is, I haven't heard anything about the commercial side of this. You know, it's about residency, and this project, I think, is all wrong for a lot of reasons, but I haven't heard, we have an enclave there that's for businesses, and when Blacksburg's growing in terms of residents and everything else, there's going to be a need for commercial, for services and for businesses, and we have an enclave there that's, you know, set for commercial. And I know they said that we have an office building that's sixty percent unoccupied now, and if we don't approve it tomorrow, it won't be filled, but I think we need to look at two, three, five years down the road. You know, there is a commercial side to this in the planning, you know, this long term. So, thank you.
If I may, I'd like to comment on the office. Blacksburg Market has a vacancy rate of about three point two percent.
Let me stop, let me stop you.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Okay. You're, you're welcome, you're welcome to address the commission as a citizen and have your full three minutes, but that'd be the last time you could comment on this public hearing.
Okay. Blacksburg Market has a little over four million square feet of office space. Vacancy rate is about three point two percent, and that is a tight office market. But this is a small market, and it's a specialized market, largely because of Virginia Tech and the research and programs that go on at Virginia Tech. The reality is, the sort of office that exists today at this project is, was built in an era to standards that don't come close to what new office people are interested in leasing. We've been actively marketing this for over two years and have been able to land one tenant of about eleven hundred square feet in two years. Virginia Tech is still, Virginia Tech was a very big tenant in the space. The seventeen thousand square foot building is vacant now. That was Virginia Tech, it was a tenant there. They still occupy quite a bit of space in eight forty, I believe it is. Virginia Tech has been, in recent times, pulling office uses and programs back on campus or back to university-owned facilities. So, and that's a large part of why this project is having such a difficult time from a, from a leasing perspective. There, there aren't customers looking for this, or clients looking for this type of building today. They don't offer the amenities. They don't offer the, the exposure. They don't offer the community that S A C R C has, or some of the projects closer to campus in the downtown area. So you may say, well, there's, there's not enough office in Blacksburg. I mean, it's not unique to, to this project. I've represented office buildings along South Main Street and had the same trouble. They just don't offer, can't offer the amenities that current office users are looking for. And there's not a viable way or a reasonable way to change that, and not, not an economically viable way to change that with these buildings configured as they are and built when they were built. So I don't, I don't challenge Megan's comment that there's a shortage of office in the Blacksburg Market. I think I would agree with that, but it's the type of office that's available is where the problem lies. Situated back behind the shopping, built in the nineties, and built as big floor plate. Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, you can't speak twice during a public hearing.
I don't want to speak, I just have a question.
You're welcome to address, you're welcome to address us at, after the public hearing. There'll be open citizen comment, and you're welcome to speak to us at that time, or address your question at that time. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Laura Purcell. I live at eight two six Tom's Creek Road, and while this is at the far opposite end of McBride Village, we all feel the squeeze of higher density throughout the entire neighborhood, from the hub, from the edge, from the union. It encroaches on our neighborhood, and this development would too. I would just like to say two, two things. I didn't prepare anything today, but in the traffic study that I read, I believe it said it was a service level of D with no improvements suggested to add this density, and that just does not add up to me, and I would really ask you to think about, what are those traffic studies providing for you informationally if they're really only serving to support developers' proposals? Because that's what it looks like to me. You've heard anecdotally issues about traffic. I'm sure that there is data that I don't know where to find it, but if it's already a service level of D on an A to F scale, right, with almost nine hundred more people added to the neighborhood, just what will that do? My second question that I'll ask you to consider is, why would it be our responsibility in, in the town to, as taxpayers and as citizens, if the current commercial buildings are not meeting the needs of what commercial renters want, then why does it mean that you go against your comprehensive plan, make it extraordinarily dense student housing because that's what's most profitable? I, I think that there's a, a missing element that's the responsibility of the current property holder, maybe to upgrade their facilities, or maybe think of more, more creative ways to attract tenants. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Steve Hetzel. I live on eight forty Hutchinson Drive. I've been there twenty-seven years, and what I see is, with this growth going on, you're driving, you're driving people out of this neighborhood. I, I've seen, and that, the students are going into the neighborhood, they're having parties. Just this Thanksgiving, they had a party, and they were out till after one o'clock partying, running up and down the street. Fortunately, I was asleep, my wife wasn't, but I, I'm just seeing a lot of students in the neighborhood, increased vehicles on the road. I work at the arsenal and have to leave and come back every, every day, and, and it's just taken a lot longer. It's sad to hear that we've had students killed on Price's Fork Road. I don't recall that ever happening before, but, I mean, the town lowers the speed limits. I don't see that, that the people are responding to that or adhering to that. There's ordinances that says you can't have board and free unrelated people in a house. I don't see anybody checking up on that. We've got at least a half a dozen houses in our neighborhood that there's constantly at least a half a dozen cars in the driveway, at in front of the properties. So we have ordinances, but they're not being adhered to. So what makes you think with these property, this, this property, with all those housing, with all these apartments, that they're going to be limited? Who's going to check on that? So, I, I'm not in favor of this. I think the students need to be pushed back to the, the university. That's where they need to be housed, not in our, in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Steve Hetzel. I live on eight forty Hutchinson Drive. I've been there twenty-seven years, and what I see is, with this growth going on, you're driving, you're driving people out of this neighborhood. I, I've seen, and, and that, the students are going into the neighborhood, they're having parties. Just this Thanksgiving, they had a party, and they were out till after one o'clock partying, running up and down the street. Fortunately, I was asleep, my wife wasn't, but I, I, I'm just seeing a lot of students in the neighborhood, increased vehicles on the road. I work at the arsenal and have to leave and come back every, every day, and, and it's just taken a lot longer. It's sad to hear that we've had students killed on Price's Fork Road. I don't recall that ever happening before, but, I mean, the town lowers the speed limits. I don't see that, that the people are responding to that or adhering to that. There's ordinances that says you can't have board and free unrelated people in a, a house. I don't see anybody checking up on that. We've got at least a half a dozen houses in our neighborhood that there's constantly at least a half a dozen cars in, in the driveway, at in front of the properties. So we have ordinances, but they're not being adhered to. So what makes you think with these property, this, this property, with all those housing, with all these apartments, that they're going to be limited? Who's going to check on that? So, I, I'm not in favor of this. I think the students need to be pushed back to the, the university. That's where they need to be housed, not in our, in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Christine Embry. You've already heard from my husband, Mark. I don't have anything prepared, but I just wanted to say, it was eight hundred thirty-six beds? Is that right? I think we all know that the students have their significant other spend the night over, which is what we see a lot, I think, in McBride Village. While it might only be three residents in a house, everyone also has their boyfriend, girlfriend spend the night, and because of the location, they are there every night, hence why I think we have so many cars. So even if only half of the students there have their significant other over, that is a lot more students. And our youngest child just turned eighteen, but he has autism and ADHD, and one of the nice things about living in our neighborhood was thinking as he grows up that he will have the, the freedom to be able to walk to the grocery store or restaurants, and given the increased traffic, there's no way that he can safely cross even to go to the University City Boulevard stores, especially with all of the traffic around Price's Fork.
Any further public comment? Going once, going twice? All right, thank you. We will move on to applicant rebuttal. The applicant liked to spend the next three minutes addressing.
Yeah, thank you. So real quick, again, I'm sympathetic to the adjacency to the neighborhood. We, again, and I want to remind everybody that the current zoning has a build-to limit, has a height limit, right? We are trying to go further back. We're trying to be smaller from a height perspective. I get that we're asking for more density that's currently allowed in the comp plan, which, by the way, is two hundred and thirty-three pages, right? Not one page. It's two hundred and thirty-three pages, your comprehensive plan, right? Not one map. So again, we're sympathetic to the, to the homeowners, but the thirty-five foot, the thirty-five feet is from the first two floors. Once you get to the third floor where the residents are, we're forty-seven feet to eighty-eight feet setback from the property line, right? Again, trying to make sure that we're paying and relieving that neighborhood. I'm sensitive to that. I mentioned in a prior meeting, we built a project where we raised windows in the back of the building overlooking single-family homes to try to limit people from staring into the, you know, from their bedrooms down to the backyards. We were happy to proffer that we want to replace all these trees. Again, we, we want to make sure that there's a buffer, and this is, quite frankly, what we look for when we go to these, these towns or these cities where we're not at the back end of a residential neighborhood, we're at the bottom of a residential neighborhood that's up a hill, that doesn't make any sense why a resident of this community would go through that neighborhood to get to campus, right? That, that doesn't make sense. And again, they're mentioning people that are in that neighborhood today. Well, they're living in that neighborhood today with absentee landowners. Three of the seven properties that are abutting us are owned by LLCs that don't have mailing addresses to Blacksburg, right? Sixty percent of these homes in this neighborhood, based on the town of Blacksburg study, are renter-occupied, right? We have a professional management. Seven people at minimum will be on this property twenty-four hours a day. I mean, tell me one landlord at one of these single-family homes that actually lives on the property, right? So when you have an issue, who answers that issue? No one. The party goes on until two o'clock, until the kids get tired or drunk enough to go home. That doesn't happen at our property. We have a management plan. We have a no-noise policy, right? Past a certain hour, if you have a problem... that neighborhood today with absentee landowners. Three of the seven properties that are abut in us are owned by LLCs that don't have mailing addresses to Blacksburg, right? 60% of these homes in this neighborhood, based on the Town of Blacksburg study, are renter occupied, right? We have a professional management. Seven people at minimum will be on this property 24 hours a day. I mean, tell me one landlord at one of these single-family homes that actually lives on the property, right? So when you have an issue, who answers that issue? No one. The party goes on until 2:00, until the kids get tired or drunk enough to go home. That doesn't happen at our property. We have a management plan. We have a no noise policy, right? Past a certain hour, if you have a problem, you are evicted from the property. We're happy to put that into a proffer, right? We will not be the problem, I promise you, okay? Again, I'm sympathetic to the residents here, but we're talking right now to the town about trying to make traffic improvements. We've done extensive research on the number of incidences that have occurred along Prices Fork. The last two years, there was two incidences at the intersection of West Village and Prices Fork. The last two years, and both of those were non-fatal. We keep referencing this horrible incident that happened to this student that was sitting at a bus stop. I mean, I just think, it sounds like that was a freak accident that occurred. Again, sympathetic, but again, it was not because of traffic, right? Somebody was going too fast there, and they jumped a curb, right? Horrible incident. So, again, we're happy to talk about sunlight, ways we can try to further reduce the project of the impact on that single family, but I just want to make sure everyone remembers, we currently have under the zoning the ability to build literally up to the property line and 60 feet in the air, or 70 feet, I think, at the end of it. So again, we're, we're trying to pull this building back as far as we can. If there's further things we can do and discuss tonight, we're, we're happy to talk about those. So, thank you.
Sure.
Can I ask more questions for staff?
Yes, please do.
Okay. All right, I was asking Andy if I could ask more questions to staff. Can you get ready? There were just a couple of comments in the public comment that I was hoping that you would clarify for us, and one of them is like enforcement of over occupancy and how the town handles that.
So enforcement of over occupancy in any situation is generally handled by a complaint-driven basis. So if, if you think that your neighbor, whether they're in an apartment complex or your neighbor's a single family, is overoccupied, you would call our offices and we would conduct an investigation and follow, you know, follow our, our protocol down that way.
And do you mind giving a little more detail on the protocol?
Sure. Our protocol in, generally involves going to the property. We look for things like how many vehicles are there. We, we generally perform more than one inspection. We ask to enter the, the unit and ask how many people live at the unit, ask how many people are on the lease. Folks give, give all kinds of answers to those questions that we ask, and sometimes they're honest and sometimes they're not. But, but based on the results of the inspection, if we do determine that it's overoccupied, we enforce that, and we, we require people to leave the premises and, and find other housing. They can appeal it through the BZA, but ultimately there are civil penalties that are issued if, if they fail to comply.
So generally, in a managed purpose-built student housing built facility like this, do you get complaints or?
Generally have not received complaints about, about this type of student, purpose-built student housing, for as far as over occupancy is concerned.
Well, there's a proffer regarding the occupancy.
Yes, there is.
And that will fall on the building operators to enforce?
To begin to enforce and, and using zoning as kind of that backup as, as being the real lunchpin.
Okay.
And then I have another question regarding traffic and the scoring of intersections, because I think it's often interpreted like a grade scale with A being best and F being worse, but it's not my understanding that that is the correct interpretation of the scale.
I'm not the best person to answer that, unfortunately.
Do we have someone that can answer that? No.
Matt, do you have a better answer for that?
Not on a technical level.
Okay.
Because this comes up a lot. One of our overarching philosophies in the comprehensive plan is move people, not cars. Part of that is the understanding that we have certain pinch points in our traffic network that are never going to get better. The classic example is the intersection of Main and College Avenue. It's never going to be more than two lanes and a left-hand turn lane onto College. So we have some physical constraints within our community, so we're never going to improve level of service in that area of Main Street as we grow. The planners would tell you, Andrew and his team, the best solution to traffic is a well-dispersed grid. If you zoom out, we don't have that either, except for the original 16 squares, and we're not going to have that with our development patterns for, with decisions that have been made for decades and decades beyond. So the, the traffic, you know, analysis that happens with a level of service, it's an engineering tool to just evaluate the road and mitigate the impacts of that development on the road. So most commonly, you see traffic signals or turn lanes put in as the mitigating factors. There's never going to be a mitigating factor to improve Prices Fork Road, because it's crazy when Virginia Tech lets out at 5:00 PM, or whatever the case may be. So I can contextualize it with that, and level service A is generally better than B, than C, than D, and it varies at peak times. Our busiest time in town is PM peak, is when we have the biggest stress on our traffic network, because generally, most people leave at the same time. And there's a, there's a window when schools are coming that there's an AM peak, but it's not as severe as the PM peak. So it kind of factors in all those layers when it looks at what are the warrants to a turn lane, to a traffic signal, to a stop sign, on a much lesser level. So that's just some general context of evaluation of what is the impact of a development in our community, but it's, our traffic is never going to get better. I hate to break that to people. That's why we're looking at moving people, not cars. Transit, there's wonderful graphics of a bus that fits 70 people. Throw 70 cars on the road next to it, you'll see the impact visually pretty quickly. So that's why we're more interested in building out our sidewalk network, our bike lanes and things like that, to have alternate modes. And those create issues too. It's not a perfect solution, but trying to make a healthy balance. So hopefully that helps a little bit, but the engineers are going to have to answer the more technical of A to B to C to D to E to F and the nuances of the overlap. So sorry, Commissioner, I can't get into that.
Could I follow up, and again, recognizing that this may be, but that notion of moving people, not cars, and the, the growth of essentially what we're talking about is trying to get to where there's more student housing available at walkable distance from campus. And so part of that then creates the challenge of pedestrian, moving pedestrians. And I'm curious where the town is, I, yeah, this may be, where the town is on looking at, as we have that pedestrian growth, what are the creative solutions across the broader places like Prices Fork? I'm just curious where we are in that conversation, because that is, in essence, part of, I'm less concerned about, or hopefully, less concerned about cars. I would not think people are driving to campus from this.
So, zooming out, from a town perspective, the best place for the students to live is on campus. I think it's pretty obvious. If they didn't live on campus, we want them campus-adjacent.
Right.
And there's a couple different areas. Downtown Northwest, which you all have talked about, that goes to council in December, is one area. The area along Prices Fork Road, and then generally the Patrick Henry corridor, if you look at our comprehensive plan, that's kind of been cited back from 2022. Each area has its pros and cons. Downtown Northwest probably has the most pros and the least cons, because you're crossing Turner Street, and there's not a lot of vehicular traffic on Turner Street, especially relative to Prices Fork Road, which gets roughly, depending on the segment, 22,000 trips a day. So on that piece, Susanna, the town is working with VDOT. It's called an OIP study. It's a fancy word for their planning group to lead to what is ultimately a smart-scale application. The challenge from the town's perspective is that's a competitive process that's seven years out from today, if we were successfully funded and when we have access to it, and it's not a silver bullet, i.e., that level of funding is not a grade separated bridge or tunnel under or over Prices Fork. That's the safest way to kind of get people across, and there's different pinch points along the road. So there'll be other things that'll be looked at on how you cross the street, how you direct people, wider sidewalks, things of that nature, but it's never going to be a magic, you know, eureka, we have it, this will solve all our ills. We just have too many conflict points everywhere that it's all of a sudden going to be a utopia, because there's just so many cars, bikes, people. But to make the condition safer, and what we say to folks is, everybody needs to be paying attention and not distracted, whether your earbuds in, face down, and the phone, you're driving, you're looking at the radio, or your phone, you get the point. So that's what we're looking at. We are looking at making improvements. We're also looking at pedestrian improvements in the UCB, Tom's Creek, Patrick Henry area, in our capital improvement program on a smaller scale. Think like crossing islands and stuff like that to slow traffic when you get to them. It's, again, it's not going to be a cure, but it, you put a little bit of obstacles in the road, and people have to pay a little bit more attention and generally slow down. We're looking at lighting crosswalks. There's some, not just the little flashing beacons, but actually lighting them. So we're looking at some of those fixes as well, just to make it more obvious that there are vehicular pedestrian conflicts. Again, it's not going to be a cure. All people still need to pay attention, but it's things that we're looking at, we're well aware of. The other piece is the funding landscape is really challenging with infrastructure, the way that VDOT funds projects now, for better or worse, it is what it is. And the window for when we apply to when we get capital is four years out at best. And that's just a reality that we have to deal with in these large-scale projects, because we, the town, can't afford them without support from VDOT or, you know, US Department of Transportation, just because the order of magnitude cost is so much. So, sorry for the long response.
No, that's really helpful.
Matt, I have a question. Do you know what the average daily traffic is at Main Street where it crosses College?
Crosses College? I don't. I know coming into the roundabout is 14,000. I could look it up on my phone in a minute. It's available publicly on VDOT's website.
I think it's 20,000.
That probably is about right. Our, our largest traffic is South Main Street. It edges out Prices Fork. It tapers down a little bit, but not much.
If we can handle 20,000 people with one lane each way, why do we need two lanes each way plus two turning lanes, so six lanes to cross at UCB and Prices Fork?
It's a fair question. It depends who you ask that to. You know, VDOT wants to move folks efficiently, so, but adding lanes isn't always the solution. Ask in large metro areas. Don't want to throw certain cities under the bus proverbially, but there are certain cities that have done that, and it hasn't worked out.
Do you know how many, how many daily traffic there is? I really don't know the answer to this one. The other one was a bit of a setup. But do we know how many, how many at UCB?
UCB is 10,000 roughly.
Why do we need four lanes plus turn lanes on UCB? If the idea is moving people and pedestrians and it's dangerous.
Well, I would say the town doesn't have a vision of, you know, adding lanes at UCB. I mean, that, that, that is constrained as well. The sidewalks are narrow.
You're talking about adding lanes. I'm talking about taking them away. Is that, is that in, is that ever discussed?
That hasn't been discussed to date about taking lanes away, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? All right. So do we have a motion regarding rezoning 257, ordinance 2094? Move approval of the ordinance with the, with the added proffer that he offered, if that's possible? Can we include that, the, the proffer to put large trees on that line?
No, it's generally the, the way that proffers work is, it is really up to the applicant to be able to offer them. So it may be something that he may be, be able to address between now and council.
Okay.
Motion second. Do we have any discussion?
Well, I'll go ahead and start. Break, break the ice.
Thanks, Jerry.
So I want to thank everyone that came out tonight. It's been a while since we've had an almost full house, so it's nice that, that people could find something other than Virginia Tech basketball or election results. So thanks for being here. I want to commend the developer and his local representative. You guys have worked really hard. You've listened. It's a challenging site. It's continued to evolve the way, and, you know, it's important to acknowledge all the work you have done to date. You shopped this around to folks before you put your thing in, back, I guess it was in July, way back at the end of July, and it has evolved greatly to that from, from then to now. So, so, so we need to talk about that and acknowledge that. But for me, what I told you in July still stands tonight in November, is that it's getting better, but it's still not there for me. And for me, the, the beginning of this, before we get into all the dirty details of it, is simply the comp plan. And you guys have spent a lot of time fighting against the comp plan. You've spent a lot of time telling a lot of folks up here who have worked on the comp plan what we meant by when we did the comp plan. So thanks for letting me know what, what we did. But I want, I want to come back just a little bit for y'all, for y'all, and for my colleagues. You know, land use is a very passionate, emotional thing sometimes. You have to respect the property owner and their rights and what they are allowed to do, and maybe what they want to do. And then you have the community, and the community who is going to be impacted by it in some way. And so there's this tension that we always have between personal property rights and the larger we that is our community. And so for me, the we as a community is addressed two ways. It's addressed in our comp plan. Our comp plan is a guidance document. It's very aspirational in nature. Blacksburg has a very comprehensive, comprehensive plan and very aspirational. We redo it every five years. That's a requirement. And the way I look at it, that's the community conversation. So that's the first time that the citizens, working with staff, stakeholders, property owners, everyone gets to say, to say, what's our vision of Blacksburg? And, you know, it all goes together like making sausage, and what comes out is hopefully is a very imperfect plan, but an idea of some path that we can move into the future. So that's, that's the first time that the community has, has a voice. Then we deal with, with what we deal with most is, is these rezoning requests. And once again, the community has some input, and then of course, the property owner or the potential buyer, you know, they get to sell us our goods and tell us what's going on. So that's the second time the community has the conversation. So one, the community does get a good amount of conversation, but I, I, I think, I think it's just important to acknowledge, the comp plan is important, okay? It is a guidance document. It is important. And when you do a PRD and a rezoning, it's, it's, it's on y'all to tell us why we need to do something different. I mean, that's really it. And so, so, so when you come in here, you know, to me, you're swimming up, upstream already, and so, and, and you guys have done a good job. You read the comp plan. You guys have done some of the better jobs I've seen with, with whatever. So I guess the comp plan is not the constitution or something that it's, it can't be changed, but, but you know what? We do have to follow the comp plan from time to time, and it does give us good guidance, and it does honor the, the, the overreaching stuff for our, our citizens. So, so at the very base level, you know, I'm not going to argue that this needs to be redeveloped. I'm not going to argue that some, some multi-use thing should go there. I'm not even going to die on the hill that, oh, we're giving up too much commercial. I appreciate commercial is at a bad place now. Thing is, if we give up commercial, then it's really hard for it to come back. So you got to find a balance between the two. And office, as one of our folks said, that, that's important as well. So, so, you know, all that plays into that. But, but when we look at, now I'm going to pivot from the comp plan, and we look at PRDs and what we're talking about, again, it's, it's on the, the developer to kind of tell us how their, how this flexibility and innovation and everything that you're going to do, how great it's going to be, and how it's going to really help our community. The, the affordable housing, building the affordable housing, the 50-year thing, that is amazingly awesome, okay? I, I mean, I'm putting it out there. It's great. We've never seen it before, and it is awesome. But there's a lot of student-built, purpose-built student housing. And when you look at, at, at the PRD, it says underserved housing needs. So, you know, you're kind of doing a little bit of a check there for the affordable housing component, but you know, you're going way over the top on housing that personally, I believe, we've provided enough in town right now. So, so it's kind of hard for me to, to kind of accept that. Another thing that we need to consider is the impact, not just on the neighbors, which is very important, I don't want to, but, but for me, one of the big things is the impact on public services. on public services. The, the infrastructure can't handle this right now. I mean, at the same time that you are close enough for people to bicycle and walk to and from class, therefore being out of their cars, which is a good thing, there, there's going to be a wave of pedestrians on a very narrow sidewalk. There's going to be a wave of bicycles running over said pedestrians, the ones that don't want to ride in the road. So, so it's, it, the location is great. The support structures, as they are now, are not great. And, and so I think this would really, really cause a problem, and it's especially a problem in the morning, you know, because there's large tranches, trances of tranches of people at one time that moved to campus because they're all trying to go to class at X number. But the trickle-back is, is a trickle-back throughout the day. This development's on the wrong side from the transit. I mean, the transit's, you know, going away from the university on the closest side. Now, they can get across the street. But now we got a bunch, we've got a huge amount of people, bikes, everything, trying to cross that four-lane thing to get on the buses. So you're at transit. It's a good place, but it's just all wrong, the way it is right now. I just think it's too much, too dense, too impactful on the, on, on our current thing that we just can't handle that. Finally, y'all are the second ones that we've had in, in front of us in recent times who have, have brought a very large, dense, student-built project in front of us. The previous applicant had a variation of a theme that y'all made tonight as well. And so I want to address that, is that for me, and I think for anyone that serves in these appointed positions, we're here to serve the residents of this town. And if you're a resident of the town, you, you may have a business or you may be, you know, you have your overnight accommodations here, but you're a resident. We don't create two classes of citizens. You're not a resident and an owner-occupied homeowner, and you're not a resident, you're a renter. You are just a resident. There's not two classes. So you guys followed the template of the earlier ones, trying to show us that this neighborhood is already not owner-occupied. That doesn't work for me, okay? That, that's, that's not a good argument, okay? Not a good argument, and I would seriously say, don't make that anymore. Residents are residents. People live where they are, and it's their homes regardless. So you have to be respectful of that. So, mainly because of the comp plan, and then as the PRD, for all the impacts, because we need to do planning there, it is ripe for planning, it's ripe for redevelopment. This is putting the cart before the horse if we do it. So at this time, I cannot support this.
Is it possible to pull up the map that we're talking about, the comp plan? Is it the future, the future land use map? And so that red line then is mixed use?
Yes, that's correct. It's the mixed-use bubble that kind of encompasses the UCB Gladel Road.
And what, what is the mixed-use bubble? Is there, is there a description of that?
There was a description that was provided in your staff report, but generally, mixed-use bubbles were, were created in an earlier version of the comp plan, a number of years ago, where we wanted to have targeted areas for commercial and residential redevelopment, primarily.
So, sorry, then why is this not in, in aligned with the comp plan, future land use map, if it's mixed use for commercial and residential?
I would, I would go so far as to say that the, the mixed-use, especially this particular mixed-use area, there are other mixed-use areas in town, but this one specifically does talk about the high need for commercial services in the area because it is a, it is one of our two prime commercial corridors, between this and kind of the, the North Main Street, South Main Street, commercial corridor. This is really the only commercial area that we really have.
And do we distinguish between office and commercial?
Generally don't, no.
I'd lump those together.
Yep. I would, I would say it's probably maybe easier to think about residential and non-residential uses. And those, those commercial uses being non-residential.
This is a really tough, tough proposal to consider, and I say that because I do think it's what we need. I do think it's in an area that could be amenable to this mixed-use idea. At the same time, the issues with infrastructure and traffic are very, very real, and there, there are no easy solutions to that. And as we heard tonight, there are no solutions that could come within a year or two. It's, it's ugly right now, especially in getting out of some of those parking lots. It, it's just ugly. And I struggle with the idea that we need this, not just for student housing, but for, for other renters who may need that kind of housing. We need the upgraded commercial opportunities or retail opportunities that could be available here, but we don't have, we don't have the infrastructure to support it. We just don't, and there's, there are no easy answers right now. We don't have any control over what Virginia Tech decides to do to manage their housing, but if we don't address it, then we still have the problem of housing not being affordable because there's so much competition for every level of housing. So I, I do appreciate the proposal. It's just very hard to support without having the infrastructure that we need and the ability to at least have a plan for it down the future, in the future.
Could you put the map back up to my class four? That kind of brings... So then I guess we're not, what we're not seeing off to the, to the left side of that map, is that continues on to where? To the bypass, roughly?
Uh, it doesn't go all the way to the bypass, I don't believe. I think it just encompasses the Virginia Tech Foundation property, the Virginia Tech property that's there between there and...
I think it goes to Old Glade Road.
Yeah.
To Old Glade?
Just, just past Old Glade.
But not across Old Glade, Old Glade.
Right.
So if a mixed-use development, so it's a, it's a, this is pointing out a location for mixed-use development that is covered under two different land use designations, correct?
That is correct.
And so, and then we're struggling with infrastructure to serve development on that side of the road. When I say infrastructure, I'm talking about primarily pedestrian infrastructure and how to safely get people across the road. I would argue that it's going to be impossible to have a meaningful and workable mixed-use development inside that red bubble if each individual project is being piecemealed.
Mm-hmm.
So do we have an area plan? Not, not a future land use plan, but an area plan for this area that's designated as?
No, the mixed-use areas did not go further into kind of outlining how much or, or where those things should be within that, within the mixed-use bubbles.
And I understand that this team has done a really good job. It's obvious there's been interaction between the developers and the neighbors, at least in the yellow side. I would like to think there might be some interaction between the neighbors on the other side of UCB, which, which you mentioned the Foundation as being one of those owners, to see how all this may come together. May not serve us in the next couple of years, but to actually give us a real workable plan. It also takes into consideration perhaps first, future roads on the Virginia Tech campus, primarily the west campus extension, and how that may relate to this. So that there is a goal, a way to get something workable in the future, so these individual projects that we seem to be dealing with time after time after time, that have merit on their own, but don't take the larger context into consideration. It seems to me that we're, we're at a point where we need to start thinking like that a little bit. And also I think with, with the idea of the pedestrian movement and infrastructure, thinking about, when I say open space, I've been misunderstood before about my, when I'm talking about open space, I'm not talking about individual open spaces around individual buildings. I'm talking about an open-space network that serves as infrastructure to move people, stormwater, so forth and so on. So I, I, I think we have good intentions in our comprehensive plan, but there's portions that are, that are missing that help us, that I think would help us get, get to that. And I'd like to think that individual developers could work together, if we don't have the tools on, in our disposal, to come in to put a plan before us that shows us how a larger context plan helps meet the vision of the comprehensive plan. I struggle that an individual project like this will never be able to meet the vision of the comprehensive plan and economic interests at the same time. Virginia Tech's a driver of our economy here locally. They're a driver of bringing population in. It seems to me they need to be a partner in how, if it houses like it'll be on campus, how it can be outside the campus and still work with the town. That's a larger context, but I think it's important to keep that in mind when we, when we look at individual projects.
I would recontextualize the notion of the development not taking into consideration the larger context, but more what I think we confront is projects coming before us that are hamstrung by the limitations of the context and the lack of action on that. And I do, I, I, it's so fascinating this evening because a huge amount of what we heard from the community is part of what building student housing close to the campus is trying to address, right? Which is residential communities that are largely being taken over by student renters, over occupancy, the cars that go with it, the noise, et cetera. And that, that sort of paradox, where we, on the one hand, talk about what we need, i.e. a way to accommodate student growth in such a way that it is not an impingement on a community like McBride. And then we look at what, because I would argue that the violation of the comprehensive plan, I'm not sure that's a hugely convincing argument to me, in part because there are, as you point out, as the developer points out, a number of components of the comprehensive plan, and the capacity to draw a map which then becomes the rules of the road, I think, doesn't track with growth and development and time passing and different needs. And this is, in fact, as Michael points out, it is in mixed use. It's not a, it's not a radical violation. It's a desire to expand the perimeter or rethink the perimeter. I also do think that this issue of saying we need more commercial space, but then we have so much empty commercial space and because that, that world is changing, so that, that sense of somehow a developer, developers, I think, are taking in the context, but we're not, we don't have a plan to accommodate that context, so your point, Blaine's point...
Yeah, maybe I'm...
No, I mean, I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
The thing I was writing down in all my scribbles here is, you know, the, the need for partnership, and even when we were talking about processes for pedestrian traffic, et cetera, it's the partnership of the reason for the additional population, which is Virginia Tech. And so the fact that we're doing this in the shadow of Virginia Tech having actually turned down a development of on-campus housing, and then it sort of falls into the lap of the town to try to accommodate it. But meanwhile, I do think there are places around campus, as we've been discussing, imperfect as they may be, that are a better solution and create at least the beginnings of a kind of solution to easing perhaps the overflow of, I would agree, often overoccupied residential spaces and the changing of the character of the neighborhoods that have been described and the communities that have been described. So I kind of like what Tanya said, I find myself, I, I wonder, you know, Jerry, you said the cart before the horse, and I have moments on here where I think maybe we need to occasionally put the cart before the horse in order to force us, like if we just say no to all of these because pedestrian traffic across Prices Fork, for example, and there's no impetus to solve some of the things, the contextual things, we sort of stay in this place of not solving, freeing up potentially residential housing for a market that is in need by creating spaces for students to live in that more purpose-built housing. So it's, it feels like this, this chicken and egg scenario, and who's going to blink? Virginia Tech does not seem to be blinking as the town says no to a couple of purpose-built houses because of their impacts on communities. So where do we, where do we end up? Is, would neither problem solve in a sense. There's not more housing. There's not the, the ability to move students closer to campus, reduce car traffic, reduce impingement on family, community life. So where, we, we sort of stop ourselves at the, at the gate every time, it seems. I don't, I don't have an answer for this. Like I'm sitting here really conflicted by these opposing needs. I really, I do applaud the developer for the evolution of the project and the responsiveness and what they're trying to do, and also for the providing affordable housing as part of this project. It's hard to look away from that. In a place where I think it would actually be very attractive for many of the same reasons that it's attractive to a student population. It's, it's near grocery stores and campus and workplaces and walkable and all of that. So I, I don't, I feel like we get to this place every time, and ultimately, why would developers keep trying if the other half of the equation is not being met? I don't know if that's an ignorant, I, I always feel very, I don't have as much knowledge of this as other people on the commission, but just instinctively, there's, that seems to be where we stop. And so I'm starting to rethink the cart before the horse part of it. Like maybe, maybe you have to force addressing some of the solutions, some of the issues that become very clear when, in fact, we build this housing and, and expand student housing across Prices Fork, for example. Thank you.
Thank you. You took a lot of my thoughts and put them very eloquently.
Usually the other way around.
Oh, boy. I have some practical thoughts that I want to put to this, and I think that the shape of this development speaks to the individual property rights that we encounter in Blacksburg every day. Somebody different owns all these little parcels, and somebody, if they want to make a sensible development plan, has to piece together, make a contract to buy, put, take a lot of risk, design a thing, and show it to us. And we can make, as a town, spend a lot of money on a plan, but it doesn't and will never preclude the fact that individuals own each of those parcels. And, you know, I think that we're experiencing this in downtown northwest, where we have, we are making like a plan, and we want to incentivize like a certain shape of development and allow certain types of development and incentivize things other places. And it'll be very interesting to see how that plays out, given all of the individual property owners and some of the very lucrative businesses that, that are there. In the world that we live in, where we face redevelopment as, in the future, the primary way that we're going to build anything, right? We're, we're losing greenfield opportunities. Generally, as a community in our comprehensive plan and in larger Montgomery County, we would like to see density here and not in the rural landscape. And so, you know, we have this idea that we'll put... And so, you know, we have this idea that we'll put density in town, that will keep traffic from coming outside of town, inside of town, outside of town, inside of town, in this sort of like massive influx every day. And there's a microcosm of that in town, right? You know, where people are going to the outskirts of town and into town and outskirts and in, especially the students. And so, you know, we talked a lot about how many beds are here and sort of acting like these are brand-new people that are going to now have an interest in the town and, and come here. Those people are living somewhere around here, no matter what, and we can choose, in a way, whether we want them to live very adjacent to the university or somewhere else. And I think that putting them close to commercial and putting them close to campus will inherently reduce the car traffic. And I think that there is a tipping point, right? When we start to favor pedestrians and bicyclists over cars. And that the town has more of an argument to make in the competitive processes of VDOT that, you know, we need, we need these changes more than the next town needs these changes. But, but that in itself is like the imperfect world that we live in. We could make a plan. It's very expensive to make a plan. It takes a long time to make a plan. And even when we do make a plan, it's going to develop in a piecemeal fashion by individual developers, you know, talking with owners and getting together parcels and, and choosing to take that risk. And, and in the redevelopment context we find ourselves in, housing is going to have to be a part of any redevelopment in order to make it economically viable. This is not going to go and be redeveloped without some kind of housing. It might not have to be student housing. It might not have to be mostly student housing, but there's going to be a housing component to make it economically viable. And it is going to be three times as dense, at least, as what we see there for it to redevelop in the future. Now, we can hamstring it and say it's going to stay the same way as it is now forever because of infrastructure and other concerns, or we just don't want our town to change. But I think that we do want our town to change and evolve and include more people and more diversity of people, and I think you see that in our comprehensive plan. And I do think that this is a mixed-use development. In and of itself, it's only slightly mixed-use with the commercial and residential, but it surrounds, you know, like this, commercial. And, and there's a precedent in our town for, you know, we can't have viable commercial unless it's right up against the corridor, so let's wrap it with housing. Our other purpose, you know, we have to think about this in a number of ways, right? Because it's a, we have to think about whether or not it fits within our comprehensive plan, which we've all made, you know, clear that it's sort of up to interpretation. We have to think about it as a PRD, and a lot of our checkboxes in terms of PRD have been checked. In terms of creativity of development, in terms of dealing with a hard site or configuration, in terms of providing affordable housing. If it's going to be big and dense, it better be, you know, high-quality construction and green building. A lot of those boxes are checked. We make this decision in, you know, 50 years for the affordable housing, but 100 years possibly for the building, right? And, you know, it's within, it's in, within the buy-right bubble in terms of height and size. So, you know, somebody could come in with a commercial development tomorrow that would be bigger and closer than this. And we saw that on the other corner, right? We saw the proposal for a similar sort of student housing, purpose-built, and other uses configured in that corner of UCB and Prices Fork, and we said no. And what we got is a traffic nightmare and a parking lot nightmare. And, and it is bigger and closer to McBride Village than the thing that we had reviewed. And so, in terms of the impact, I hear, I hear everybody saying like, maybe residential impact is higher than commercial impact. I think it just depends on which type of impact you're, the person who mentioned light and noise, I think, you know, certainly light all night is more from a residential building. But, you know, this is one of those where we're doing a lot of this, and, and for me, the balance tips toward redevelopment and a possible future in the town where we are less vehicular and where, you know, we do move this corridor forward to include more and different and the future of our town. Sorry, that was long-winded.
Additional comment, discussion?
I just think that it's, it's a little big and awkward to the space and the threshold of arguing to rezone from commercial to residential didn't, didn't quite work for me. I do think that the university should build housing for students. I think this would be unsafe. I think Prices Fork is a highway. People walk across a highway, and it, it's not, it's not safe. So, at the same time, I, I really think the developer made a lot of good adjustments, and the affordable housing piece is wonderful. The design changes are an improvement, but I just think it's a very awkward place. I, I don't think I could design something better for that spot, but, but it had to, it had to dodge the Verizon store and the gas pumps and work around some things and then sadly eliminate some other good things like childcare. And it just reads to me like a commercial area right now. It reads to me like it's not safe for bicycles and pedestrians. I walk there and I ride a bike there, and I never really feel safe there. Maybe that will change. Maybe if we build this, that would change, but it would take a while.
All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. The motion is for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Did you get that?
I did not.
Okay.
May I get the opposed again, please? Mr. Britt?
All right. Moving on, we have citizen comment. If you'd like to address the commission with your question at this time, you may do so or speak to the commission on any subject under the sun.
Yeah.
Please come forward.
Once again, page 24 of our draft. My question is, how many of you people up here live in McBride Drive? I want to know your address. I just want to know, you live in this situation?
I do. I live in that situation.
And you voted for it. Is that correct?
I voted for my situation or for this?
You voted for, for the, for that situation to impact, impact our, our community. I just wanted to see. So, we have one person that's involved in McBride that voted for it.
Well, I'm not in McBride. I'm in a similar situation elsewhere in town.
You're in what?
I'm in a similar situation elsewhere in town.
You're not, I asked, who's in McBride? I didn't ask for a similar.
Oh, you said a similar situation.
No, I didn't say similar. I said, we're in McBride. But nobody up here is in McBride, so no one's going to, up here be affected by this. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional citizen comment? Hearing none, we'll move on.
There's one.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I would just like to, to invite all of you to, to do what Brian suggested and just to walk the path. To walk from this site through the parking lots that the students will walk, onto Prices Fork Road, to walk in front of the old house. It's at the corner of Woodlawn and Prices Fork Road, where the hedges are so overgrown that there's single file traffic on the sidewalk. Two people can't pass. If someone wants to pass, you walk into the street. Just, I ask you, please, just as an experiment, it's easy to do, it's not far from here, just one afternoon, park, take that walk. Please, for goodness sake, for the safety of the students, if you're going to do this project, you have to do something to improve the pedestrian infrastructure around that space. And, and, I mean, it's unconscionable to put 800 students on that path without doing something like that. And so, if you are voting in favor of this, I hope you are also in good conscience, voting to also put a huge investment in pedestrian infrastructure on that road or take responsibility for the consequences of what happens when accidents follow. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say one thing.
Sure.
Jan Nodder, and I live on the other side.
Mm-hmm.
Not Hutchison. And I have to go through there every day with a five-year-old. We've had to stop so many times, not for bicycles, the scooters. The scooters pass us on both sides, or they get right in front of us because they don't know whether to be on the sidewalk or in the street. They have no idea. And it is an awful place to drive, and we have to get out on Prices Fork. I'm off late. I have no other way to get out. So, it's not just that part of the, of, it's, it's a lot of Blacksburg that you're thinking of affecting. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't say something earlier, but three times I have walked my grandson over to the mall to Panera from McBride Village, and the sidewalk is like out wide and there's hedges. And three times, and we've walked dozens of times, three times, students in a vehicle leaving Tech have come zooming out 50, 60 miles an hour and actually run up on the sidewalk. So, if someone happened to be walking on the sidewalk, they would have been killed. Why are there no police actually supervising? There are none. So, it's basically the Wild West, free-for-all. You know, kids on their hoverboards, acting like they're in a car. All of them have earbuds. So, it's like, there's, there's no law in Blacksburg. There's no rule of law to govern anything. So, people are going to be dying, basically, and it's just, it's just out of control. So, thank you, Jerry, for your comments, because those were very reasonable. Thank you.
Nancy, you should probably say who you are and where you live.
Oh, yes. So, I'm Nancy Lowery, and I live at 821 Hutchison Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm very disappointed in the vote.
I'm Laura Purcell, 826 Tom's Creek Road. I truly don't understand why the town feels that it needs to subsidize student housing and Virginia Tech offices. I really do not understand. Maybe that's something that you all can explain. As someone who lives on Tom's Creek Road and has experienced the increase of density of apartment buildings, there's no enforcement of speed limit, 25 miles an hour on that street, very, very little. No protected bike lanes, poorly lit, narrow sidewalks. The death at the, the bus stop on, on Prices Fork Road in April was not a freak accident. You're lucky every day that there aren't more. This was a very, very disappointing vote.
Megan Kuzmersky, Edward Jones, 810 University City Boulevard, Suite F. My question was just in regards to map A. I don't know if I can even ask a question, but I guess the comment regarding the entire map of the comprehensive plan, the slide that we were looking at was zoomed in, but the way that I understand the markings is that the mixed-use goes all the way to 460. And so, what we're looking at is that there's a brown area, which is the high-density residential to the left of the foundation, or it might be part of the foundation. And then, the area that we're looking at specifically is marked in red for commercial. So, my understanding of the map is that it's mixed-use because within that area, it is both high-density residential and commercial, but specifically, the area that we're looking within is in the commercial space. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional citizen comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. Zoning ordinance review committee, we have not met. Historic or design review board?
I think they're reporting.
Montgomery County Planning Commission?
I went to the meeting on October 8th, and there was a very interesting discussion of this construction dump site. I think it passed the commission, and I think it went on to the county supervisor.
Any additional items from planning commissioners? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Chair's report. Just, I'd like to put out to the commission, we will not have any applications for our work session coming up, our next work session. So, if there's specific issues that you'd like to discuss or at a work session outside of general applications, maybe you could put those forward in an email to the group or, and we can make a determination as to whether or not we would like to have a meeting to discuss those issues.
Can you explain that again?
Yeah. We can skip our meeting coming up, our next work session, if we like, but if there are specific things that, as a commission, we'd like to discuss outside of specific applications, we can put those forward and get together and have a meeting. So, just like for you guys to think about that between now and our next work session. Planning Director's report?
I have nothing. I'd just like to add on to Chair Castle's comments. If there's, if there's anything that you would have, if you could get that to us and you could use the planning commission email, and if you wouldn't mind doing that in the, in the next week, so we would have adequate time to advertise and to prepare.
Great.
Call ahead.
Thank you for that. So, we've got a week to think about it. Town Council report?
I have nothing.
We are adjourned. Thank you for attending.